Thank them all for being there. Three, three couples all looked up and smiled. I said I needed a real person. And I wanted to talk about a C group and I had to make an appointment. And I had to go sit down.
Right, at 6:30 I'm going to call this regular PNC meeting to order. Let the record show that all five of us are in attendance. The first item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking to something on the agenda, please wait until that agenda item has been called. But just regular comments, general comments, please come up, state your name, address, and let us know. Any citizen comments? Alright, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Where in we will approve the minutes. Any comments or corrections to the minutes from December 10? Have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm moving to be approved. I'll say.
All in favor?
All in.
Third item on the agenda is the staff reports. Don?
Yes ma'am, let me run through just a couple of quick things. I want to give you heads up, we're preparing a development activity report that we'll present you at your next meeting. It's gonna be looking at subdivision activity in this last year in addition to building permanent activity. And it's something we're gonna try to make as part of a regular report to you all so you're up to date. I mean, you're obviously dealing with, you know, the subdivision activity on a front-end basis. We thought the building activity you'd find interesting. We're kind of tracking, tracking things from that standpoint. Some interesting trends, you know, that we've seen. Just to give you kind of tease a little bit about it, and it's the fact that, you know, while our new home construction has dropped off a bit in the last couple of years from what we had back in 2015, 2016, that time, 2017, I think was one of our big ones. We've seen remodeling activity pick up significantly as far as the permitting process goes. Our residential construction's up about 4%, you know, from the standpoint of our permitting goes. The interesting thing is on the commercial end, it's kind of flipping that direction. So, we'll give you more information on that, more detailed information, but I wanted to give you heads up along those lines. We are looking, we're trying to coordinate schedules with the trainers for the commissioners training session that we're talking about. And right now, it's looking like potentially the first week of February is gonna work better than the last week of January. So, we want to check with you. We're gonna be bringing in some folks from TML as well as APA. And we talked about maybe a late afternoon session that will run for about three hours, maybe four to seven or something along those lines. We'd buy you guys dinner. It would be an uninterrupted session. That would give you an opportunity to go bare bones as far as zoning goes, subdivision work goes. So, is there a day in that first week of February that would work better for you all? We're still gonna shoot for the last week of January, but as a fallback for February, is there a day that works good that first week? We're looking right now at that last week of January. We're looking at either Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday. You have a meeting on Tuesday. And again, we don't want to roll this into your regular meeting because, you know, that's gonna make for a very long day for y'all. So, from that first week of February, is there a day that works good or bad for y'all? Thursday's obviously out because we've got all of them meetings that day.
I have no preference.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
I don't have any complaints here.
Okay, then we're gonna say everything's free for Thursday, that first week, and we'll target that. But we're hoping to have some information to keep that down for you as far as that situation goes. And that's all we've got for this report.
Hey, item four on the agenda is public area and possible action. The city is making recommendations to the Board of Aldermen regarding codes of ordinance relating to parks and land dedication requirements for new subdivisions within the corporate limits of the village later on in ETJ.
Yes ma'am, you have before you the draft ordinance. We circulated that in advance of the meeting. It really kind of cracks everything we've talked about for the last couple of meetings as we've talked about the development of this ordinance. For an educational piece, before we get into the public comment, a little history. The city has for years had a provision in place that requires developers to, you know, within the city limits, not in ETJ, but within the city limits, to provide park space. Or if they can't provide the park space, they pay a fee, something like $200 a lot in their subdivision. In the last 12 to 18 months leadership of the board, in fact, for this board too, there's been discussion about whether that is a realistic policy and whether it may really be, need to be updated, that's somewhat outdated. It's just not really accomplishing what it's supposed to accomplish by trying to move developers in the direction of providing recreational spaces and amenities instead of trying to check it out from under. So, with that direction, the board asked us to come and prepare a new ordinance for consideration, and we've done that. And this is a much more comprehensive document than we have in place right now. This document in simple terms, instead of having one fee in place, it sets up actually a couple of different fees and a couple of different mechanisms that don't exist today. It number one, develops a land allocation requirement for parks that's based on our current level of service for parks and recreation. So, there's a methodology that's proven in that sense. It applies that to the current population and it applies that to the number of dwellings we have in the community. So, there is a basis, a true basis that we can point to for why we require how much land. This particular ordinance itself will require a developer to provide an acre of land for every 95 dwelling units. And that's whether it's 95 apartments, whether it's 95 new places, single-family homes, 95 is the rollover mark. At minimum, we talked about this at the last meeting, at minimum, they're gonna have to provide two acres. The calculation for growth is one to 95, but they're gonna have to provide at least two acres. We're not requiring that all to be a contiguous lot. It could be an aggregate of improvements, be it trail systems, those type of things, they can provide anywhere along that. There are different ways in this ordinance that could talk to you about how you can meet that land dedication requirement. So, one to 95, minimum of two acres per area of development. This doesn't have a limit in it right now as far as how this applies. And I want to talk to you about what our staff recommendation is on that. We're thinking about this going into effect and applying to subdivisions that involve five lots or more, as opposed to just throughout the C group. We talked a little bit about that at the last meeting, about, you know, the applicability to small subdivisions. You know, you had one that was like a 10 or 11 on subdivision, I think, most recently. And the idea was that they could provide some type of dedication along those lines. But, so there's a dedication requirement for land, for park land. If the developer is not interested in providing that land, the developer has an opportunity to buy out of that land requirement. It's called a fee in lieu of. This again is for public park land. And the fee in lieu of is again, based on a methodology. It's not something we just pulled out. We went into an analysis of property values. And in visiting with the CAD and in looking at the values in this particular area, there seems to be a pretty strong feeling that an average acre of land in this community is $80,000. We've had people tell us it's over $100,000. We've had people tell us it's more like $60,000. We've calculated and feel comfortable leaning on the $80,000 as far as that element in the formula to calculate the fee in lieu of. And as you go through this, you can see how that, how that applies, you know, as far as the fee in lieu of. And what it basically says, it equates to when you calculate by the dwellings, your dwelling calculation of 95, you take that into the 80. Long and short, it works out to an equation that produces a fee of $842 per dwelling unit in the development if you don't want to provide the public park land. So, you know, if you had 100 dwelling units in the development, you multiply 100 times 842 and that would be the fee that you would pay the village to not have to come up with a park land. So, what does the village do with that money when it gets it? That money would go into a dedicated fund. And the city has been broken up into quadrants, there are four quadrants. And that money would be used to go acquire parkland and eventually develop parkland in a quadrant where that subdivision's located. The proximity of that park is gonna determine what type of park is developed. You may take two or three subdivisions and use that money to go into the development of a community park, for example, in a quadrant, as opposed to a neighborhood park. A community park being farther from where that subdivision is. So, $842 per dwelling unit if you want to buy out of the parkland dedication. And then there's a new fee that's included in this particular ordinance that we've never had before. And, you know, the previous ordinance said, "Give us the parkland. If you're gonna buy out of the parkland, give us the land and we'll go, we'll go develop the park." Well, you buy land, but you also need to develop it into a park. And so, where communities are going today is they're developing park development fees to go along with these in lieu of fees or to go along with the parkland dedication. And so, we've gone in and we've researched park development costs and have come up with a way to apply the park development cost for development. And that is, the park development fee, as you can see, is a little bit sizable, but it again is calculated based on a proven methodology. It comes out at about $3,388 per dwelling unit. So, if you have 100 dwelling units, you're gonna multiply 3,388 times that. And that's gonna tell you how much you're gonna, you're gonna put into the development of that park. The reality of it is this, that's a very realistic number when you start thinking about the cost of constructing a park. Be it site development work, be it the cost of whatever amenities you do, be it plumbing that park, be it putting electrical in for the park, those type of things, however you want to design that. So, those are the three options that you have for public park land. You do have an ability in this ordinance, and we've built into this ordinance, the ability for you as a developer to come in and build a private park. Okay, you're still gonna be obligated, since it's a private park and we're trying to build public park land, you're still gonna be obligated to pay fee in lieu of. But if you choose to build a private park, then you have the ability to apply for a credit to get 75% of your park development fee back. Which makes sense. They're basically going to spend the money to develop the park. So, you're gonna give them the money back. They have to pay it upfront, but they're gonna get it back once they prove up the fact that they have developed a park for the city's standards. And they just provide us with the documentation, it's that simple. So, there's a, there's an out for the developer in that situation if they want to avoid, you know, this. They still would pay the parkland development fee, the way this is set up right now. Or, excuse me, the fee in lieu of, because they're not dedicating public park land. But they do get an opportunity to get a large chunk of the money back as far as the development cost, which is a higher cost, obviously, between the two fees. Yes, sir?
I'm assuming that's up to 75% back, depending on how extensive their design and planning costs are.
If they meet, if they meet the design that meets the city's standard, they get 75, not up to, they get 75 back. They just have to prove they're extensive.
They have to put that much into it.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's a benefit. So, they're getting back, they're getting back the percentage and there'll be another park, or excuse me, a private park that will be available. And the thought process, obviously, is that's gonna be developed in there. In private parks, there are obligations in there for private parks where they're gonna be obligated to maintain it on their own so it's not a burden to the city from a maintenance standpoint. And there are standards that they will have to be met. The design standards are, you've seen those in the overview that we presented in previous meetings, they're pretty comprehensive. We give the developer the guidance of the type of amenities we would like in the parks, depending on the type of park they develop, and they need to live by those. Those will be in what's called a parkland dedication manual. You know, we'll also have, we'll also repeat the acceptance requirements for the type of land. We're not just accepting any piece of land, you know, for a public park if they choose to dedicate public park land. Will we accept floodplain for public park? Absolutely. But there are also certain standards regarding that type of land and what percentage of that, that park land can be floodplain versus what percent can be maybe more useful land from a, from a design standpoint and a characteristic standpoint. Pretty straightforward, a little long, but needs to be long. We're gonna develop, as I mentioned, this parkland dedication manual, which is gonna go through the formulas and how all fees get calculated. And that will accompany this ordinance as we begin the enforcement process on this though. You know, I think it's gonna be new for people. It's obviously much more than we have right now, but quite frankly, the criticism is we don't have enough right now. We've tried to provide some pretty open guidance as far as the type of land. I think y'all have given us some good input as far as, you know, the minimum acreage and those type of things. I think it makes sense to be flexible with the developers to let them be able to bring in open space and aggregate space as opposed to single lots, you know, and those type of things because I think it's gonna allow the developers some flexibility to make you think in different ways to deal with it. It also is gonna, like Keith pointed out at the last meeting, it also is gonna, the flexibility, I think, allows you, you know, to still impose the type of requirement on multifamily, be it apartments and things like that that come in. Because they too place a burden. The whole concept of this ordinance is to take the burden of the growth off the existing taxpayer and let the growth begin to pay for itself on services like recreation. In the future, hopefully, we'll be talking about looking at transportation impact fees to the point where the growth will pay towards road development and those type of things. And that's something that we as the city would not have to pick up the cost for. Be it term lanes, tech stock right now has, has some requirements relating to that as far as the improvement of their infrastructure. And we're at a point from a city standpoint that we need to get looking at those things with the growth that we're, we're looking at in this area. These are non-uncommon steps. This ordinance right here is an ordinance that the methodology is very comparable to what's being used across the nation, the communities, in the development of parkland dedication ordinances. They're specific regarding the standards, they add that development fee in there because it only makes sense if you're, if you're gonna get money from them to go buy land for the park, who's gonna develop the park? Well, if the truth is, is growth is gonna pay for itself, then the development fee needs to be in there. They don't pay for the park, so the taxpayer's gonna have to pay for that. So, that's basically how it is. It's, you know, I think you've given some good input on it, Mr.?
I have one question.
What's that?
On page five, item G. Slope must not exceed a 20% grade on more than 50% of the land. Now, does that mean, just bear with me because I'm having trouble. Does that mean that the slope can exceed 20% on 49% of the land?
Yes.
The question I have is a 20% slope, you know, because I brought it, you guys all know that. A 20% slope is, is a pretty good slope. It's 20 feet for every 100. It seems to me that maybe we could modify that just a little bit because I'm afraid what you're gonna get is a 20% slope on 49% and an 80% slope on the other 49%.
Sure.
Two percent of it's gonna be level. Meaning that it would be easy if I were a developer to figure out, you know, where's my slope? So, all I'm saying is...
What do you think? Would it be a good number?
Well, 10% slope is an easy slope, okay? That's like this. 20% is more like this. Then you've got the hill on Hester Way, which is like that. But the point is that I think that, I just think, I read this and I said, "Okay, I understand where you're going," but I, I didn't quite understand exactly. So, maybe...
There's no problem with 10%. There's no problem with 10%.
I wouldn't say that the slope must not exceed 10% grade or 15%, 10% is where I'd say.
Okay.
On more than, than 50% of the land. That way, at least half the land's gonna be fairly level.
Got it.
Because the 20% slope is not really level enough to play baseball on or anything else. You know, they've got this park out here on, you know, Ambrose and way the heck out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
It's just a basketball court, but it's a nice level piece of land. They've got parking, they've got handicap. I was gonna take a picture of it right here. I assume that's the kind of thing that we want to see. The kind of thing they don't have out there that I saw was a water fountain or something like that, or shade.
Which, this, this sets out those kinds of standards.
Yeah. But that was the only question I had, was the 20%. I said, "Ah, you can't play football or baseball."
Let me see.
Where'd we come up with the 20% slope?
Trying to create some, trying to create, we're trying to avoid a situation where we've got much flat land.
No, I understand that, but how, what I've been...
Just general, from a park design standpoint, that's, we felt like that was just a, it was a, it was a compromise number, you know, and it was, provide some flat land. But, you know, I think Don's point's well taken from a running standpoint. That makes a lot of sense. You know, we're fine with 10. I don't think it's gonna be that noticeable, to be honest with you.
And somebody's gonna, based on what I saw, somebody's gonna go look at this dedicated land before it's approved, right?
Absolutely. There's a process, that's, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought that up. This is a deal that, that there is, it would be mandatory that prior to the submission of a subdivision application, they will come in and meet with staff, with Chrissy and I, and we will sit down. And we, they will submit a worksheet to us that shows us what it is they're planning to dedicate. And we'll actually go out and do a site visit and look at that and determine if the standards are met and see if it's accepted. And, you know, there, there's a review process that will take place beforehand. You know, and of course, you go through the, the lines, calculations, and all those type of things too. Absolutely, there's a pre, there's a pre-submitter requirement.
Well, every parcel of land is gonna be unique. So, you're gonna have 10%, 20%, or maybe 25% over, you know, a couple of hundred feet of it or something. All that's gonna add to the aesthetic...
Absolutely.
...look of it, which is not bad.
And that's what makes sense, that makes sense. We've tried to build some standards in here for the type of land you'd accept that would allow for a little bit of visioning on the part of the developer instead of just requiring a postage stamp, you know, with this and that. I mean, I, I think that the good developers are gonna think outside the box and try to maximize their use. Believe me, linear parks are beautiful, well-accepted parks. They don't all have to be, quote-unquote, neighborhood parks with a volleyball court, fifty tables, a billion. There's a lot of cool stuff that you can do today as far as saving land and developing it for open space and open use. Yes, sir?
Section G, fee, and rule of park land.
Yes.
Paragraph F three, at the bottom, it says, "The village may, from time to time, require that the land be dedicated and amount to six, section D, and there's another fee, a rule of land, will be accepted." I understand the problem, but...
That's an out, is what that is. That, that is purely simply an out. That is a situation that if we get into analyzing the subdivision or if we get into a situation that gives the city the flexibility to come in and either waive the fee or require the fee if necessary, depending on certain circumstances. If you don't have that in the ordinance, you know, you're tying yourself down. Do we envision ever doing that? Probably not. But I also don't think that it's something you want to leave the door shut on.
Is that what section K is explaining? Where we require a fee, or section O, where we require a fee in lieu of instead of the land...
Yep.
...in order to pay for previously acquired tracks?
Yes. You can play into that, you can play into other situations from the point of, of depending on developments, if you have, where responsibilities of developments are. I mean, it's, you know, the idea is the fact, we're trying to plan for as many opportunities and as many circumstances as may, as may arise if you have a lot of development that can come into play when you're trying to plan certain park land, those type of things. And developing community parks around, for your four subdivisions versus, you know, having individual parks in each one. Those are all decisions that we're not gonna make independently, just, you know. Those are decisions that will come back through this board and come through the board of all of them. One of the things we've visited with legal on this thing from a staff standpoint is we try to leave as much of the decision-making process at this table as opposed to in everyone. Because I, my feeling is it's, those are community decisions.
Question about the fees. These are initial fees based on today's values and costs and such. I'm a developer out there. I want to put together a really nice development and plan it. I mean, these things are planned months and even years in advance of actually even making the application. And the way values are going up around Southern Bell County, you know, those, those, they, they may change really with no notice. At least there's no notice or no procedure for notice in what's written here. So, what, what would be the assurance for me as a developer that I really want to do a nice project, but it's gonna be, you know, iffy and they may not work, you know, another couple of thousand dollars of living here? Which could happen. So, is there gonna be any provision for notification of the changes coming or the review of changes?
Any modification in the plat, any modification in the development will trigger a re-review to determine compliance with the requirements. So, if there's, if there's a change, then we basically start it right here or again, unless they've got parks in place and those type of things.
No, I wasn't talking about that. I mean, in the initial development, I'm, I'm figuring out my costs to go, it makes sense to even do this project. You know, I'm looking at these costs of, say, 40, 500 bucks or so.
They'd hopefully have those decisions made before they submitted the subdivision application, which is one of the reasons why you want to do the meeting ahead of time so they get a full grip on what their costs are gonna be and those type of things. So, hopefully, you're gonna head that decision off prior to the submission. Because once the application's filed, the wheel starts rolling on that application, including this guy. So, that's why we require the pre-submittter review to give the heads up.
Well, these things lock in once they file their initial application.
Once, once they file their initial application, then everything gets locked in from that perspective, absolutely. The thing to keep...
I don't activate that.
Yes, sir?
Assuming that they don't change it.
Well, they're vested. Once they submit the application, they're vested at that stage of the game. So, so we really can't change that which has been submitted. But one thing to keep in mind is this ordinance also requires a mandatory review of the ordinance on a regular basis to update the fees as necessary. Land values will change. As land values change, that obviously impacts how you calculate those fees because they're based off of a value today. And it's gonna be really important that we come back and make those changes and then do the updates. Populations change, that's gonna calculate your dwelling. That's gonna change your, your dwelling calculations, which play into the, the formulas that are used.
How frequent is that, when they give a review?
Just go ahead and say now.
Just three years.
You've got three years, is what it says.
Three years, that's okay.
But it could be shorter than that if, if...
Yeah. At least, at least is what it says, yeah.
What triggers that? Who decides that?
Board, Board of Aldermen. Obviously, my guess would be this, if we see some drastic, drastic change in property values, be it up or be it significantly down, if we see a significant surge in population or building activity that indicates, you know, example being when Sanctuary comes online and when it comes online, obviously, that would probably trigger a review because that's 300-digital housing use, if that's what happens, that are gonna come into play, which is gonna change the weighting of your formula. But once you submit your application, you're vested and protected. We keep them in a change.
So, Don mentioned parkland dedication. May, maybe we should make the requirement for that at five or plus five or dwellings? Do y'all have opinions on that? Should we only start the dedication of land requirement after the development is over five dwellings?
Or is there a number greater? There needs to be some number, or maybe even a little flexibility in the range, depending on what they're, they're in.
Take, take the money, though, right? Take, pin the money. You get a five-lot subdivision, they're gonna pay $4,000 a lot or $4,200 a lot overall of cost. So, that'd be $20,000. That may be a lot for a small subdivision, but...
Then it'll get a rate on it.
It may not be. I don't think that makes that much difference because if you got a five-lot subdivision, you're not gonna set aside two acres of land for a park, you're gonna pay the fee.
I like, I like five as a good number.
That's good for me.
Yeah, five is all right.
Okay, so we can mark that into the language that the minimum starts after five houses? But the, and what about the development fee, the parkland dedication, or the park dedication development fee? Should that be paid no matter the size of the development? Yeah? Okay, Jim's nodding his head. Any other opinions?
Okay, so, so let me, let me back up. Thought process was this ordinance would apply for five-lot or greater subdivisions. All ordinance, anything under five acres, this would not apply to.
Five acres.
Five lots, excuse me, five lots. Five lots. And the reason I say that is you can have five 10-acre lots or five 10-acre lots, those type of things.
It's about multi-family though.
That's five single-family dwellings.
I started saying, we talked, we talked acres, we talked dwellings.
Dwellings.
So, it didn't harm, just dwellings.
Yeah, units.
You could have ten, or something.
I feel like everybody should pay the park development fee. Is that wrong?
Well, I do too.
I like everyone.
Because everybody's gonna live in the community, uses it, so...
I think this ordinance should apply to everyone, I think this ordinance should apply to everyone, but the parkland dedication requirement only to developments over five dwellings.
Units, dwellings, yeah. Okay.
What do you think? Okay, okay.
So, the only fee that would be applicable to the five-dwelling units or up to five-dwelling beds is gonna be the park development fee, obviously, cause the fee in lieu of doesn't apply, cause there's not a requirement to have in that situation. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Move back to our position.
Okay, what, do you, do, do y'all have any other recommendations to the language of the ordinance?
I had the ten acres on slope, or the ten, ten degrees on slope.
Okay, so, I need a motion from someone recommending approval or recommendation of this ordinance with the change of a ten percent grade in Section F dot G, parkland dedication requirement after five dwellings, and that all developments pay the park development fee. She's forgetting.
So, and then you're gonna wanna call for public comment, talk to your cell.
Okay, so that's, okay, so they've made that motion. Jim made the motion. Don seconded. Paul seconded. Um, I'm gonna call for public comments. Second call for public comments. I have to go third.
Okay.
Okay. Public comments are closed. Any discussion? Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay.
I figured what it would be. It would be, under the applicability section, there would be language in there, we would add in there that say that the conditions of this ordinance, with the exception of the park development fee, are applicable to all developments that have five dwelling units or more. And then what we'll do is we'll add convenient language in the park fee deal and also in the fee in lieu of deal. So, the park fee in lieu of and the park dedication, let's say that this is not applicable to those under five dwelling units. And then we'll have language in the, we'll have a sentence in the, uh, park development fee that says it's applicable to all developments that have five dwelling units. That's.
Are we gonna have another reading on this? No reading?
Unless they all can change it.
Yeah.
I think thinking of the developer, they should've come in and developed a lot of four, twelve.
The pods. We'll call that development of pods.
They're all next to each other.
Here, your subdivision ordinance promotes cluster development. That might just fall right in line with that.
Yep. Okay, um, so, had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, passes.
Thank you all for your work.
We're gonna move on to Section Five, discussing considered possible action regarding proposed construction final plat in Mill Creek Springs, Phase One Hundred Eighty-Nine, getting Phase Nine subdivision in the ETJ of the Village of Salado, generally located at the corner of Hester Way and Blackberry.
Hi. This is for Mill Creek Springs, Phase Nine. Um, it is a subdivision in our ETJ, again on the corner of Hester Way and Blackberry. Um, this phase does conform to the approved concept plan on file. This is for the construction and final plat, and involves thirty-nine residential lots and twenty-five acres, uh, located in our ETJ. Um, water services will be provided by Salado Water Supply Corporation through a six-inch water line and the twenty-foot utility easement. The applicant is proposing onsite sewage facilities for all lots in the subdivision. Common areas and lots will be owned and maintained by the subdivision's homeowners association. The village engineer has reviewed the final plat and has determined that it is in conformance with the village requirements. Uh, it's also been reviewed by Bell County, as it is in our ETJ, meets all of their requirements. Uh, following outstanding items will be addressed by staff after consideration of the plat, but before filing. And this is because the applicant is actually filing for their construction and filing, uh, final plat all at one time. So, uh, before we file the final plat, we will, um, inspect construction of public improvements, including water improvements. Um, we'll, uh, have the design engineer provide us a letter bearing a seal certification that all public improvements are constructed in compliance with all of our, um, uh, village construction standards. Correspondence from county engineer regarding inspection letter and acceptance of all infrastructure, we usually do that walkthrough with the county. And the applicant's design engineer will provide two sets of ASBILs as an electronic, and an electronic copy of the plat. So, that will all happen after the infrastructure is completed, but before the final plat is filed, we will not file a final plat until those items are completed. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. And, um, the representative for the developers here as well.
This Phase Nine doesn't, isn't actually on Blackberry, just, you've got the fence behind it, right? So, there's not really a, uh.
Yeah, the, the subdivision, the entire is.
From where that is, it's not, actually not entrance on the plat.
Correct. The, the entire subdivision's, uh, at that location. So, this is an internal phase to the subdivision.
I have the same type of question. Um, cause Hester Way and Blackberry don't ever come together anywhere. So, it's, it's, it's leaving, say, it's at the corner of Hester Way and Blackberry. It's like, oh, okay, that's in, on Mars somewhere.
Right.
Um, so where are, where's, what street is it? Now, think about the stop sign that's now at the top of the hill on Hester Way. Is, where's the street that goes to this subdivision? Is it the one that, just before we get there?
Cause you turn off at Blackberry, I'm at one intersection to, to a sleigh over here. Go around that thing, it's, it's back down, right behind that fence that's right along Blackberry. They got a really fence along Blackberry there.
Yeah, I'm trying to, but if this thing shows to come off Hester Way.
It, it, it does. It's on Hester Way and Green Mark Trail. Green Mark Trail already has a stub out there, and it, it continues Green Mark Trail. Green Mark Trail will be built out in this space. There's a stub out from Green Mark Trail, Hester Way, that stubout's gonna be built out.
Doesn't exist now?
The stubout exists.
It's just, there's, you start down the hill on the other side or from the golf course.
Yeah, I tried there, cause, you know, I go there all the time.
It's right there.
Um, so I, I, I'm looking in my mind.
During lectures, you're going out.
Correct. Is, is, is it where the stop sign is?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, cause there's this stub right there where the stop sign is.
I think that's it.
It's before you get to park fee.
It's before, that's what I'm saying. It's right at the top of the hill where the stop sign is.
It's where, it's where that new stop sign, that's what it's called on the count.
Exactly. I, I got it. Perfect. Cause there's a little road that's not finished, it just ends there.
That's Green Mark.
That's right.
Got it. Thank you. I was, I was going nuts trying to figure out where Hester Way and Blackberry came together. Doesn't make any sense.
What kind of road is Hester Way and Grandview? How many, what, I don't know what the property, it's on stone, but what class of road are Hester Way and Grandview?
Those are going to be, well, Hester Way is minor collector.
Yeah.
And then, um, Green Mark would be a local.
What about Grandview?
Grandview's a very short street.
Yeah, it'd be local.
And the reason, the reason Hester is, is a minor collector is because it has several stubouts or several smaller streets that come into it.
Is there a limit to the number of stubouts and streets that go, you want a minor collector?
Really?
I don't believe so, no.
At some point, it becomes a thoroughfare.
Yeah.
Right, and, and so that, however many, the, the more roads that feed into it, we, would reclassify the, the, what type of street it is.
Or major collector.
I think it's turning into a major collector. Uh, but.
People go very fast on it too.
Yeah.
Even those stops, potentially totally is the worst.
That's true. Okay.
Call first.
Uh, okay. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Remove your approvals submitted.
Move motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, carries? All right, discuss some considered possible action regarding your request for a permit to modify the exterior, the exterior of a commercial building located at two sixteen Royal Streets, Salado, Texas, on property zone, historic district.
We have an applicant venue by Anna Creek has applied for a building permit. The exterior modifications include replacing a door on the west side of the building with a window and replacing a window on the east side of the building with a door. And that is the extent of the exterior modifications. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. This did go to the Historic Society, and they have no objections to the, the proposed changes.
As a matter of curiosity, are you saying the door and window just changed places or?
I, I do not know. They're building permits under review, so, uh, I, I don't know what their, their plan is for the actual materials.
I don't believe they are.
Yeah.
It's irrelevant. Door wouldn't be right on the same side, so.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, carries? All right. Item C, discuss you consider making a recommendation to the Board of Alderman regarding findings of the Village of Salado, minimum block size, cast of course. Jay Richardson attends. Do you have a presentation? Any comments you'd like to bring?
Well, I was asked to attend and, um, I could, uh, repeat the findings of the, uh, Board if you so like.
Come on in.
Well, good afternoon or good evening, Board and Don. I'm gonna pull my notes up here since this presentation was done in September. It may be a little rusty on it. This presentation was given in September and it was, uh, given to the Board of Alderman, uh, on behalf of, uh, the Lot Size Committee. Uh, the committee considered a fellow by name, Don Gross, myself, Melanie Kirchmeyer, Jim Leiser, Frank Wallace. Uh, we were asked to research and make a recommendation for criteria of minimum block size for developments within the influence of the village. Uh, that's whether they're already inside the village or planning annex into the village in the future. Uh, and at that time of my presentation, uh, I did include some verbiage, uh, urging that the, uh, the Board of Alderman and any planning and subdivision work together to determine our recommendations, which is why I'm here tonight. And our recommendation seems to dovetail into some of the work that you did tonight, as a matter of fact. Uh, considerations of the committee were to maintain the village's character, uh, provide for healthy growth in the village, encourage developments to incorporate green space, and to discourage developments to be homogenous in lot size and housing style. We refer to that shorthand as cookie cutter. Um, we went through a, a detailed process, which I'm not gonna be counting now to you like as I, I already did that in September, uh, but, uh, it did involve, uh, a lot of meetings, involved some public input, and, uh, a lot of research on behalf of the, uh, on the part of the, uh, committee. Because the issues were complex, uh, the committee recommendation is made in two parts. Uh, first, an average lot size for new developments. By an average, we mean a, a mathematical mean, uh, to develop, it's a development sum of every lot size divided by the number of lots. Simple as that. Uh, second was an absolute minimum lot size for any one lot within development. So, between those two factors, we thought we had covered the middle ground pretty good, uh, trying to cover most of the contingencies. Uh, and this committee feels very strongly that usable green space within a development is as important as home size, lot size, and we included this in the recommendations, even though it's not part of the defined initial scope of the committee. The recommendations are, uh, new development plat should have an average lot size across the entire development of fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, about a third of an acre. New developments should have a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. And new developments should have a minimum of five percent usable green space, and that's with an emphasis on the use of it. I concluded the initial present, presentation with, uh, remarks thanking the committee members for the time that they placed in, uh, developing all of this. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, just reemphasize the work that the committee did and thank them again for the time. Um, all that being said, do you have any questions for me at this time?
I've got a question in general. Isn't, we just have a discussion now about this. Five percent usable green space, I mean, that's, that's gonna be kinda covered by our parkland ordinance, isn't it? Basically.
It dovetails pretty close.
It, it did. I, I was doing some quick math in my head when I heard your discussion tonight for the first time, and it, it aligns very, very closely.
Well, and it's also going to, if a developer comes in and has a, you know, two hundred acre development, uh, maybe a section of, uh, you call it for better word, estate lots, uh, and then, you know, kind of regular single-family housing, and then maybe some small three-row lot, that kind of project. Uh, it's gonna, you know, the way we've, we've structured the fees on our, uh, uh, new developments now, it's gonna really discourage any inexpensive tract housing on the smaller lots that, it'll probably discourage smaller lots because you're gonna pay the same amount for a six thousand foot lot as far as your, your fees required for, for parkland, than you are gonna pay for that two-acre lot.
The committee did, uh, consider that and, and not as a counterpoint to what you, the, what you just said, but more as a, uh, just to relate some of the considerations we were taking into account. The lot development, um, is going to be somewhat driven by the topography of each development.
Yeah.
And how the streets lay out, how the corners lay out, and there's a, a certain profitability associated with different lot sizes and development sizes. So, uh, we wanted to just set the boundaries.
Well, what I'm saying, that's gonna be a good thing for our development, is, is, uh, because it's gonna discourage the smaller lot sizes, basically.
Assuming our parkland ordinance passes, that would seem to me that your third recommendation there is really, really a moot point.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's gonna be covered, more than covered by our, the, the, our parkland development fees and such.
We, uh, our committee struggled, uh, the first few meetings just defining the scope
For where is our, 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 the scope?
Well, um, again, uh, you know, we're talking about lot size and everyone just assumes residential lot size, but, you know, the trick of matters is it's every type of development block size. So, we had to, we had to narrow that scope down first.
Sure, sure.
So, does, does your recommendation apply to single-family residential, estate, patio home, and attached, or just single-family residential?
No, all three of those are two-footed, yes.
Okay. When I read this, I thought the five percent usable green space meant like front yard, backyard of the, of each particular lot, but that's not what that means.
That is not, that is not what we were intending. Uh, what we were intending is, um, set aside public access space, uh, that is usable for tenant recreation.
Okay.
Did trails, did it open spaces, did, does that was part?
Just picnic lawn or, or hiking trails or what have you, but we don't, we wanted it to be usable. We didn't want it to be, uh, drainage pit.
Do you, did the committee have a recommendation on what the, the road frontage reach hot?
We did discuss that, and that almost carried through to the final recommendations. Uh, we had a lot of strong opinions about that. However, we felt that if we, if we as the committee made a hard recommendation for a minimum street frontage, then that could, um, if, if that was taken as an ordinance, then that could really restrict some developments, especially if you. if you get into tight turns, corners, how cul-de-sacs might be developed out, that sort of thing. So.
Cul-de-sacs are gonna be, just basically, it's gonna be a driveway and a little bit of space on the side, because you're gonna have all your land in the back and the sides.
Correct, we looked at the lot size dimensions and we didn't want to come up with a third acre being made up of a third of a strip that was two hundred feet deep, we didn't want that situation either.
And we kinda already had one of those over there on, on Ewley Lower.
So, what we're trying to avoid, we wanted to give enough of a recommendation, get hard guidelines in place, and then the situation, adapt to the topography of the following.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Jay for doing such a fine job of refereeing various points of view that has come out in this thing, sometimes we have a very good discussion. And if I can make a little speech here, I was one of the people that wanted to expand the considerations of this lot size task force to also include things like setbacks, yard sizes, and I brought pictures of the houses over on Ewley Lower, and I had no problems with them. I mean, they're fine, but they're narrow lots, and they're, you know, three hundred feet long, fifty feet wide, and setbacks and things like that should also be considered. My, I voted for this, because it was unanimous, right?
It was.
Because at the point in time at which we got, it was clear that we were not going to get any further with this, because the complexity of the issues involved required our involvement, not the minimum lot size. So we ended up with this as a, as a, as a recommendation. Now, what I would like you guys to do, if you would, is to think carefully about what can happen if you have a third of an acre average lot size as an average. And getting into, I did a little analysis, which I sent to all of you, which took the current sanctuary project, was it the, Arizona, I don't know, one of the two, and said, okay, if we took this and made it into that, how much money would we lose in taxes? In my opinion, Salado needs to be concerned about three things primarily, and is concerned about three things primarily. First of all, safety. You gotta have a safe community or you do not have a prosperous community. Second is prosperity. You have to have a prosperous community or we can't have safety. And the third thing is tradition. So, safety, prosperity, and tradition. And those three elements need to be considered in our lot size task force. We were focused more on what was said here just a little earlier, that we don't want small lot sizes and cookie cutter developments, so it's decided that a third of an acre would be large enough to encourage, not encourage, that sort of development, which nobody wants. And I was saying, and this is just for your information, I don't disagree with their finding at all, because at the time it was the best finding we could get with the group we had, made a lot of input, and my voice was just one of five or six around the corner. But I thought that we should really carefully consider the, the relationship between tax revenues, lot sizes, sewer hookup fees, et cetera, and how we could describe a development, and I've been trying to figure out how to say this, so it didn't sound like I'm criticizing anybody, because I'm not, how to describe a development in such a fashion that we can maintain the safety, prosperity, and tradition of Salado, and still make it possible for us to get the revenues we need to provide these. I'm afraid, and if you look at this average lot size of a third of an acre, and I'm building a development out here, so you gotta have a third of an acre. Well, based on this, I could have a choice, I could have one or two twenty acre estate lots, as Paul was saying, and a whole lot of little lots, all right, to give you a third of an acre, because there's no minimum number of lots that you could have under a third of acres. I could have, you understand what I'm saying, have a hundred acre development, you have forty acres, two lots, there are twenty acres apiece, and then you could build whatever you want. So I think that we should really consider how to describe this effectively, and then also setbacks and things like that. I think it's a lot more complex than just saying an average of a third of an acre, and I guess that's just what I wanna say. It's a lot more complex, and I'd like to go further into it.
I think the marketability factor is gonna settle that by itself. Nobody's gonna buy those huge lots next to all those little narrow lots.
Right, right.
They're not gonna sell.
I just would like to go into it and say, okay, let's look at it.
I don't think the market's gonna take care of itself there, I don't think.
Otherwise, I don't have any.
You can't dictate every little detail to the developers on what they can do and what they can't do.
But look at the lots on Ewley Lower that you brought up. Those are clearly not the kind of subdivision that we want in Salado. I've talked to enough people already, and, and they're fine, and, you know, nope, nope, but they're this far apart. They remind me of where I grew up, where I was born in Chicago, you could walk down a sidewalk, you know, between the house, put your hands like this and touch both houses. Well, it's almost a situation on Ewley Lower. And we don't want that. So what I'm saying is, I think we need to figure out how to drive what we want effectively. Otherwise, I think third of an acre is fine as a result, but I'd like to be able to describe more specifically. So maybe accepting the small lot size task force recommendations, but with the caveat or the extension saying we need a better way of looking at this.
How big do you keep using the Ewley Lower as an example? How big are the lots that put every lot?
They're fifty or sixty, what are they, sixty by three hundred, something like that? And with five foot setbacks? I measured them.
If we pass this, we're not, that would be Ewley Lower, right, with a third acre, you're not third acre.
Yeah, they're half acre lots.
Half acre.
They're three hundred feet deep.
They're three hundred feet deep, they have to be a half acre because they're on center.
You know, and that's, that was an oddity in that flood plain back there.
Right, exactly.
That's the problem, which is a unique situation. Most developments are gonna be in developable land where there's not a lot of flood plain and all that stuff. I mean, I, I, I think we're overthinking it now, it's, it's gonna be okay. It's gotta, it's gonna come for approval. Developers aren't gonna do anything stupid where they're gonna lose money and not have a marketable product.
You have to forgive me, I'm gonna come, okay? And I really, really would make it stupid.
I'm gonna get you in therapy, dog. And about that Chicago thing too, but that's another.
Literally, where I was born, you could just picture the house, you could reach like this and walk down the side, and, you know, that's not what we want here. And, and I was suggesting we recommend setbacks and things like that, and nobody wanted to go that far. And I'm saying, I think we should go that far, at least think about a descriptor that says, here's what we really like to see. I actually asked Jay and the committee to look at it and say, what do you think Salado should look like? You know, go around, take pictures, someone around took pictures, and everybody agreed that the little development over here behind the civic center.
Sure.
The little houses there is what Salado should look like.
Home place.
Home place. And they, they said home place is beautiful, well, home place is small lots, they're not big lots, but the way they're set up with setbacks and et cetera, et cetera makes it... So I said, well, gee, you know, just saying we gotta have a third of an acre average. Well, and I was imagining, and perhaps you're right, Paul, maybe I'm just imagining this, but, you know, you get to the point and say, okay, I got a twenty acre, one twenty acre lot, and fifty, you know, eight acre lots, which is something we wouldn't want. So I think maybe we should be a little more specific of our recommendation. Say a third of an acre, but, you know, you can't, you can't mix this way.
Your key word is average.
Well, having, having dealt with this for months. I would offer unsolicited advice. The first, the first thing is, the charge of the, of the Lot Size Committee is completely different and very limited compared to responsibilities of the P and Z. I, I would encourage you to eat the elephant one bite at a time as a committee, and, or as a planning board. I would look at one aspect, and don't try to completely consider every aspect of it, how it could be interpreted over an infinite number of scenarios, but I would just consider one aspect at a time, and, and deal with that, decide on a, on a recommendation. And our committee, one of the first things our committee did was to reach out and look at what other municipalities that we saw things that we relied, and see what those other municipalities did, how did they structure their lot sizes. We looked at Redmond Spur, and a handful of different small Texas communities. I would encourage you to do the same thing, you're not inventing a wheel. It's been done before.
Average, I think, I think one of the key words that Jay mentioned tonight is average, and I think that's, that is, that's a big piece. If this entire city, as cool as Home Place is, if this entire city developed out like Home Place, people would be fleeing this community, because the density would be so intense, that it would, it would supercompress this place. The average, you can have Home Place, but you can mix Home Place with, I'll tell you what you got, you got Mill Creek. Because one of the maps that was presented to the committee showed the existing lots in Mill Creek, and the size of those existing lots, and people would be surprised at the number of lots that were small in there, in addition to the number of lots that were large in there. Many that were well below a half acre, a significant number well below a half acre, many that were above. But it's that average, I think, is the number to not lose sight of at that stage of the game. You're gonna get forced in the coming weeks to discuss setbacks, because, I'll give an example, the Rosemont subdivision's coming into the village right now, you know, and it's just been annexed into the village, we've gotta get that property zone. But the problem is, it doesn't fit any of our zoning categories based on the development scheme that's been presented. You know, as far as the, the type of, the lot sizes that are developed versus fitting into our current ordinances. It's not a townhome development, but the lot sizes are gonna be similar to that, as set forth our current ordinance, so we're gonna be bringing that to you all, talking about modifications and looking at setbacks from that perspective. But I think Jay's exactly right, I think you can take one step at a time, you'll work through it, because I think you can sit and spin your wheels and dig yourself really deep in a hole worrying about fifteen different pieces at the same time.
Let me make it clear though, as the final word here, I don't disagree with the recommendations. I think they're fine, I would just like to see more detailed description of what we're looking for, so we know what we're looking for, if nothing else. And that's it. So, I rest my case.
Yes, sir.
You and your committee did a lot of work in this, and I just wanted to say thank you. I have a vote.
I have a committee, you're welcome, and we, we were happy to do it.
I mean, I'm great.
Thank you.
Jay's been a counsel ever since.
Conflict resolution.
Okay, so, looking at our current ordinance, it's very clear that estate, residential, patio homes, and attached residential homes like townhomes and condos, some of these already have minimum lot areas under the six thousand recommended here. So I really don't think that this recommendation can be abroad and cover all of this, I think we need to say that this is a recommendation specifically for the single-family residential, not patio homes, not condos, townhomes, just this single-family residential.
With wastewater.
With wastewater, with wastewater.
Wastewater, wastewater in my mind's your operative in the deal.
Indeed, Jay, it's gonna be half acre lots.
It's gonna be half acre lots anyway.
This is only in.
It's gonna be those guys served by wastewater system.
Yeah.
And we know we're not serving residential areas with wastewater with exception, the west side.
So I think honestly, this is a solid recommendation with the caveat that it has wastewater and it's a single-family residential district. I think we, as a P and D, need to go back and review these, and I think we should also come back after, if this passes the Board of Aldermen, and review the minimum lot, front yard, side yard, rear yard, because that's what you're seeing on Ewley Lower, and that's where we could have some teeth and come back and review of that, which we get to by the next month, if the Board of Aldermen approves it. Do you guys have a recommendation or motion? What do you all wanna do?
We approve the recommendation, as, as it's, with the caveats that we just talked about. If your company, the ordinance is done, then we will review that also, so.
Well, that's the third, the third recommendation that came out here, did you want to wait until we got our ordinance approved, and we can take out the recommendation?
Yeah, I see if we leave that read out in the Z and there for the Board of Aldermen to give it. We don't have to make a recommendation tonight. Do you wanna sit on it? We don't have to do anything tonight.
I, I agree with this, I, I, of course, work with it, so, I agree with the, the concept of average for the reasons stated, that you could have a variety of different lot sizes, and it'll be up to the developer to determine how he wants the proportion of his lot sizes around in whatever subdivision he's got.
I have no problem with it as written. Don't worry.
I don't hate it. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna review it all anyway, once it's, I mean, this is just a work in progress, we've passed along, but the board.
It's setting the benchmark that's gonna step the stage for your future reviews of the site.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
And everybody that I've talked to about this has indicated to me that they want to maintain the value of properties in this Salado area, and that means not encouraging small lot sized buildings. And, and I think this might be an approach that satisfies more people than not, because everybody's not gonna be satisfied. I say we can make a decision.
Work the job. This was the best meeting we did.
He made the motion.
We understand it's not approved as, as is for review by Board of Aldermen.
Seconded, all in favor for sending this?
Aye.
Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.